The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of Manassia Common Council at 6:18. If you could all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Snyder, if we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Isenak. Alderman Sevigny. Alderman Perkins is absent. Alderman Lewis. Alderman Marshall. Alderman Grady. Alderman Repella. Alderman Nichols. Seven are present.
Thank you. First item is Item D, which is a public hearing. Director Schrader, would you like to just give some context before we open it up?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So this ordinance is part of a much larger project that the council and the city has been working on for some time. So this is the former Markway Metal Site. It is kitty corner from Stone Toad and across Province Terrace from Fire Station 36, I believe. So basically, this land was owned by the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority did come into an agreement to sell the property to develop as a single-family subdivision, but these single families would be zero lot lines. So imagine a duplex, but each side is owner-occupied with a property line down the center. So part of that is the plating process, the development agreements, and the rezoning. So this ordinance specifically is rezoning the property from C1 General Commercial to PUD Planned Unit Development. If the council can recall, we did have the preliminary plat through at the previous council meeting. What that was kind of entailing and doing was just moving that project forward so the engineers could continue to work on the final plat process. So this is in conjunction with that, but just the official rezoning aspect of that. There are two items kind of on the agenda this evening. One is the official rezoning of the property, and then the other is the PUD language. So anytime we have a PUD, it is kind of looked at as kind of a special exception or a unique circumstance where there are kind of different lots kind of development happening. So the PUD narrative really kind of touches base on the project as a whole, the setbacks, how that's going to be developed, how that's going to be structured, and then again, the rezoning is the official rezoning of the property. So again, this is part of that whole thing. We will note that at the preliminary plat process at the last council meeting, we did adjust the street name of Sand Hill Lane to Field View Drive to align with the street to the north. And with that, the Plan Commission minutes of 8:20 do not reflect that. So there is, in the memo, there is an added staff recommendation, basically to stay consistent with the Plan Commission, or the, excuse me, the common council's motion at the last meeting. So that last, the last item in there would be to just adjust any verbiage related to Sand Hill Lane to Field View Drive within that narrative.
Thank you. So next we'd move to opening the public hearing for Item 1012-24, an ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the District of 2001, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number 7-00015-02; 2019, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number 7-00015-01; 2011, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number 7-00011-06; and 2027, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number 7-00011-08, Commercial 1 General Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. Does anybody in the gallery wish to speak on this one, Item 1, public hearing? I'll go around once, go on twice. Seeing that nobody in the gallery wishes to speak, we'll bring this public hearing to a close. Next, we'll move on to E, which is Report of Department Officers, Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through C and Communications D, E, and F.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And ayes have it. So next, we'll move on to F, which is Public Comment on Any Matter of Concern to the City. Please just step up to the podium, state your first, last, first and last name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak?
Corey Simon, 2517 Gosling Way. So they are doing the curb and gutter right now on our street. I stopped them today for doing ours. I can talk louder. Can you hear me now?
I'll start you over.
Is that better? There it goes. Corey Simon, 2517 Gosling Way. I'll see you next week. So they're doing the curb and gutter and the road in our neighborhood right now. And in March, March 18th of 2024, the city council voted 5 to 3 to vote down any sidewalks or trail, and they are putting an eight-foot trail through my easement, so I stopped them today. I didn't talk to my attorney, I left him a message because, a couple things. One, we should, we were told that we don't pay for trails, so we shouldn't have to pay for that in our easement if it's in our easement. Two, the city has a liability for insurance for it. Three, it is documented in the minutes of March of 18th that there would not be any trail or sidewalks. Four, it's on the TV. And the other thing is, is the maintenance on it. The city is liable to do maintenance on an eight-foot trail. Now, I understand if you're putting a five-foot sidewalk in, there's four foot or five foot from what I looked up today in the city ordinance, but the eight-foot concrete slab, six inches deep is a trail. And so my understanding is, is that's what we're putting in our easements so that you guys can try to get it passed later on. This has been voted down four times, and I'm not trying to be a jerk. What I am trying to be is concerned, because if you put the eight-foot trail in now, is it going to get passed later on? Maybe, but it was voted down and legally, it is on the record as being voted down. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the gallery wish to say anything or share any thoughts? Seeing none, Deputy Director Gordon, do you want to follow up with them after or say anything for the record? No? Okay. All right, we'll move past. So next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we wish to take it all as one or individually? Alderman Sevigny.
What's the wishes of the rest of the body? You want it individual or should we take it all at once?
All at once.
Okay. Except for 17.
Alderman Nichols.
We do need to remove Item 17.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Alderman Sevigny.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we, seeing that most of this was just basically done, Alderman Nichols.
Alderman Nichols.
All right. And there was the changes to number 15 that need to be addressed here. So we'll remove 15 as well.
Okay.
17.
Alderman Sevigny.
Seeing we just went through this literally 10 minutes ago, I think I'm usually not in favor of this, but it was unanimous in committee, so we are the committee. So at this point, I would move for the approval of the consent agenda, except for voting separately on Item 15 and 17.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote?
We'll do that by voice vote. Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Marshall.
Aye.
Alderman Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Motions 1 through 14 and 16 carry 7-0.
Thank you, Clerk Snyder. So now we'll move on to Item 15. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Move to approve the street use application as recommended by the Board of Public Works for Celebrate Manassia 150, Friday, October 11th, from 7:00 a.m. to Sunday, October 13th, 2024, at 7:00 a.m., for the Manassia Sesquiscentennial Committee contingent upon picnic license and proper insurance related to the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Lewis. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and we'll move on to Item 17. Is there a motion? Alderman Isenak.
Thank you. I would like to recommend approval of the planned unit development as presented for Sugar Maple Development LLC for the proposed Sand Hill Landing subdivision with the following conditions. The necessary rezoning of the parcels shall be approved. Two, Sand Hill Landing final plat shall be approved. Three, the developer modifies Paragraph 3.2 of the PUD narrative to provide an exception on the front setback of Lot 4, reducing 20 feet to 18 feet, and to add language to Paragraph 7 that the ownership and maintenance of any signage and the maintenance of the stormwater pond will be equally owned by the Development Board. And four, the developer modifies Paragraph 4.2 of the PUD narrative, replacing Sand Hill Lane with Field View Drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Alderman Isenak, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny.
So we're talking about the pond, taking ownership and maintenance of that. That will be direct language when we, that they will sign to. I want to make...
Director Schrader?
Yeah, so they, again, this will be in the PUD narrative, as well as they will have a stormwater agreement and plan that needs to be submitted as part of the final plat process. So they will have documentation that they have signed, and I believe they will be buying into a portion of the pond, but they will have some onsite storage.
Okay. Okay, so they'll be buying into a portion of the pond, and that's that pond that's south of theirs, whatever?
Yes. Typically, when you can buy into a regional pond, so you can handle capacity or storage, but you can't handle the peak flow aspect. So they do have to have some sort of capacity to kind of stop that flow.
Okay. And then one other, you might as well keep your mic on, I have one more question.
Okay.
And that is, I guess I didn't quite catch what Alderman Repella was talking about, the street parking and that, and I understand there's, you know, in order to have this development, there may not be street parking at all. But then when I was looking at the plan, I need to ask this question. Are they able to park in front of their garage? Is there enough?
Yeah, so the parking, the setbacks from the back of curb, or actually from the right-of-way line to the front of the garage is 20 feet, so a typical parking stall is 9 by 18. So that does add a little bit of buffer there, plus the right-of-way, I believe, is 29 feet back-to-back, back-to-back, and then the curb-to-curb line is 24 feet. So there is a little bit of additional space there that would be in the public right-of-way in addition to the 20-foot setback.
Okay. So then back to my question. If I went to go to their house, I could park in front of their garage?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Repella, is there something you wish to speak?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Deputy Director, you looked like you had something you wanted to say earlier? No? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next, we'd move on to I, action items, and the first is Accounts Payable. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of August 30th through September 12th, 2024, in the amount of $5,735,948.14.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Lewis. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next is Item 2 of Action Items, Whiting Paper Mill Fence, a common council item for next meeting agenda by majority vote. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
I'd like for the common council's direct staff to provide a summary of the history of whiting paper mill property and the possible process, I'm adding the word possible, to consider removal of the fence for consideration at the October 7th, 2024 city council meeting.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion?
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Clerk. Next, we'll move on to Item 3 of Action Items, which is Celebrate Manassia 150, which this also is a common council 9324 item for next meeting agenda by majority vote. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. There's not a motion. I simply asked for an update, which was provided in the communications, so I'm not sure why this appears under action items, and I would like it removed for further agendas.
Okay. Is there a second for removing it? All right. Motion was made by Alderman Nichols to remove it, seconded by Alderman Isenak. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Sevigny.
I certainly don't like this process. I think whenever an Alderman wants to place something on the agenda, he can come into City Hall and place an item on the agenda. So I really am having trouble with this because we didn't need to do the whiting paper thing other than we're directing staff now to take action and do something because it wasn't being done. So, yeah, and I agree with Alderman Nichols. I mean, basically, we were in the dark. We hadn't received minutes, and I know she didn't know. She asked me when the date was for this celebration, and of course, she found it out right away the, after I told her, but she found it out right away after that anyways. So it's just that I think a lot of this, the reason these things are happening, is we need better communications up here with this council.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. And there was a motion on the floor to remove the Celebrate Manassia 150 item, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next, we would move on to K, which is Ordinances and Resolutions, and the first one is O-12-24. Is there a motion? Alderman Isenak.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance O-12-24, an ordinance amending Title 13 by making certain changes to the District of 2001, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number 7-00015-02; 2019, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number 7-00015-01; 2011, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number, Parcel Number 7-00011-06; and 2027, Manitowoc Road Parcel Number 7-00011-08, from C1 General Commercial District to PUD Planned Unit Development District, introduced by myself.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Alderman Isenak, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? No? Is there a question? Alderman Nichols.
Yes. I'm looking at the memo on Alderman Isenak's computer, and one of the conditions given to the Plan Commission was that the final plat for Sand Hill Landing be approved. So Director Schrader, does that need to be a condition on this ordinance? Or has that already been done?
The final plat would still be working through, so we could certainly add that as a condition, so I apologize that I did not call that out specifically. But yes, as we continue to work through this, the rezoning is kind of contingent upon the project happening, so I think that could be an acceptable addition to the motion.
Having heard that, I'll offer an amendment that the, with the following condition, that the final plat for Sand Hill Landing be approved.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Motion was made for this amendment by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Isenak. Is there any discussion? So then we'd be voting on the amendment. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. So now, what is on the floor is, this is amended, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to appointments. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. So the rest of the council knows, I have talked to a couple of you, this is not a mayor's appointment, this is a council appointment. So I'm going to offer an amendment to change the language, and that basically, it would just change the wording from mayor's appointment to council appointment. And Mark did send me an email that he's still interested on stain on the water and light, so I feel that's a positive approach for us, so I'd be in favor of that. So at this point, change, make my amendment to this, let's see, do I have to make the motion first?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve Mark Alworth to the Manassia Water and Light Commission for a term of 10/2024 to 10/2 of 2029.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Marshall, so this is for the motion, and now...
I'd like to amend that, that the wording needs to say council appointment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so the motion to amend it to say council instead of mayor was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment, please?
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. And now it's up for a vote as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Next would be Public Comment on Any Matter Listed on the Agenda Today. Does anybody wish to speak on anything on the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move on to O, which is Items for the Next Meeting Agenda by Majority Vote. Is there anybody that wishes to have anything?
No 4:30 meeting.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to see something, some process or whatever, I don't know, if we started, City of Manassia, is to get the lock open. I know it's a lot of work with the DNR and everything, but as we're doing that corridor down at Water Street, and everything is going on, I really think we got to put some pressure on the DNR to get that Manassia lock open.
Okay, so is your motion, what is the direct ask?
It's just the City of Manassia's process in communicating with the DNR as to the steps involved in getting the Manassia lock open.
And with that, do you want like a summary of what we've done to this point?
No.
Okay.
No, I'd rather talk with them, scratch one, say, hey, this is what we want to do, what's the steps?
Okay, is there a second? Alderman Sevigny.
I'll second, but I'm going to offer an amendment then, I guess, so that we don't go through what we just went through. Oh, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
And that is, is that we direct staff and the mayor to come back to the city council and update us on where we are with the locks.
Is there a second?
Otherwise, we'll be back here with, what did you want?
So motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Repella for this amendment. Is there any further discuss... Deputy Director Gordon?
Yeah, you may.
When did you want this by?
I was going to ask that.
Can we have a little bit of time on this one?
Sure. My amendment would be for the end of October, maybe 21st. I don't even mind if it's the year.
The only...
We're not, we're not giving a specific date.
Well, yeah, and I don't have a problem having a specific date, but we have a lot of contracts going on right now.
Yeah.
And that takes a lot of time away from me, and we don't have a director in the position, so a lot of that falls back on me, and...
That's why I put the mayor's name in there.
Thank you for bringing up the question, Deputy Director Gordon. Alderman Sevigny, with your motion, what was the date? You want the second October meeting?
The second October meeting.
Okay. Clerk, do you have that reflected?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we need to vote on the amendment. Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment. If we could have a roll call for that, please?
We'll take a voice vote for that. Alderman Isenak.
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Marshall.
Aye.
Alderman Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. And now it would be as amended, and I see Alderman Nichols, you have your light on.
Not for this, please.
Oh, okay. Then I'm going to turn your mic off for a moment then. Oh, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, it passes, and then is there anything else for items for next meeting agenda by majority vote? Alderman Nichols.
I don't have items for the next agenda, just a question about the next meeting. Workshop at 4:30, what is that about?
Yes. So we're going to be having somebody that's worked with the City of Nina and other cities around the state, they come in and do a workshop... around the state, they come in and do a workshop with councils and also staff, just to provide general overview of roles, responsibilities, how to work together. And I don't know if Attorney Struve, if there's anything you want to add to that?
In terms of the timing, most workshops are typically at 5 o'clock. Mr. Foeth had requested a 4:30 start. He'd like to have an hour and a half to be able to address any questions that might come up from you all, and that was the reason for the hour and a half.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Sevigny, I'm sorry, Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. Are the department heads expected to be here at 4:30 as well?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Repella, is there any other, is there anything else anyone else would like added for O? Otherwise, I would undertake a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Alderman Marshall, seconded by Alderman Lewis to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, we adjourn at 6:48. Thank you, everybody.
The city of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassia-wi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding city of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.